Good evening, everyone, and thank you for coming to the Environmental Quality Commission. Today is Thursday, November tenth, two thousand twenty-two. It is six thirty-six in the evening, and we have warm, so we are calling ourselves to water. Miss, Mr. Hillman, would you call the roll call?
Chair person Foley.
Out here.
Commissioner Bonkall.
Here.
Commissioner Sario.
Here.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Joe, you got it. We gotta hear you.
Here, sorry.
That's okay. It's just that it's a recording, so we have to make sure people can hear us. Thank you. And now, if you'd be so kind, we could join together to say the pleasure of allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
Flag.
To the United States of America.
And to the Republic.
For which we stand.
One nation, under the individual liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, especially the day before Veterans Day. I hope you get a chance to stop out or whatever and thank our vets for doing all they do so that we can have what we have today. Okay, we have. Do I have somebody with some noise in the background? Gotta be careful. If you have noise in the background, you gotta put yourself on mute. Okay. The approval of the amendments from the meeting of October thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Does anybody, I'll take a motion to approve, and then we'll discuss if there's anything invoked. We have a motion to approve the minutes as submitted, and then can I get a second so we can discuss?
Second.
Okay. And second, will be, that was Joe. Okay. And do we have any? Anybody have any corrections, comments, et cetera, that we need to add or change to these minutes? They look pretty good. Anything from anyone? Raise your hand or speak up, either way. Yes, no? Okay, here ain't none. Can I have, can we, can we vote to accept them as submitted? Gotta, gotta say yay or nay?
Yay.
Karen?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Me? Yep. Joyce?
I have to abstain. I don't have a copy.
It came, it was sent an email.
I'll have to look into it, but I couldn't, I couldn't, I looked for it, I couldn't find it.
Um, it was, it was sent out not that long ago, but, um. So you want to abstain from it, since you haven't read it?
Correct.
Okay, we could do that, and we could still move ahead. Thank you. And Joyce, I will, I'm gonna put this on my to-do list. Joyce. Send. Patty, Joyce, send. Minute. OCP to her. Okay, I'll send it separately, so maybe it didn't get jostled up. Thank you for letting us know. Okay. Do we have anybody who has any significant changes to the way the agenda is shown today? Now, remember, we'll, we'll add stuff when it gets a new business, but at that part of the meeting. But anything that's showing there, is there anything that we need? Apparently not. Nothing from nobody? We can go ahead? Can I get some feedback, please?
No changes to the agenda.
Thank you, okay. And, okay, I know there's like a hundred thousand people out in our public participation room. Do we have anybody?
Uh, no attendees at this point.
Nope, at, thank you, at this point, none at this point. Thank you, Mr. Hillman. Just give me a moment. And I apologize if I wince or I go off in, what do you call it? You know, I put myself in mute for a few moments because my back has been hurting quite a bit. And we'll try to just whizz through what we can. We got some important things to talk about, so let's first talk about old business. Um, let me see, I see, oh, and I wanted to welcome. Counselor Verdraco, thank you for being here, before I go any farther. And did I see Mike?
Wouldn't miss it if I, if I'm available.
I, well, I appreciate that, and I appreciate that you, when you aren't available, that you actually are very nice to let us know that you are or will not be attending, because I know there's life, and it sometimes gets in the way. Or if they just keep changing the town council meeting.
Exactly.
God, that was like two months' worth of moving things around.
We actually almost had one today, but.
Oh, was that about the bad news that got reported, I heard earlier today? Had to do with some of that stuff?
No, no.
Good, good, thank God. Because that was gonna be a nasty one. Alrighty, so let's get into old business. Offer Sustainable Connecticut. Um, I have a couple of, wait a minute, I got the wrong page open. Okay. Um, I am still working on the, I just received Mike's list from Town Planning and zoning. He made a great list. I haven't had a chance to finish ticking off all the items. And making sure where they show up in our list of items, that, action items that we need to do, that they are planning on accomplishing. I'm going to, and I don't see Karen G. here. Might have to follow up on that, which is Karen. S. Did you get any information on the recycle shred? Stuff from James, so we can put that in our event?
No, no.
And did you contact him? Is he just not responded, or?
No, I haven't, I've not contacted him. I believe you might have sent an email to him, I believe.
Well, okay, but we need to follow up on these because, and I don't want to pick on you particularly, but I'm just, I'm just saying for everybody. When we have events, or somebody did an event, and we're trying to put it into the town's event list, because that's a good thing, because if we pick up fifteen events, we get fifteen points, and that's a good thing. So we have the litter pickups that were in the park, there was one or two of them, and I still don't have any updates, so we want to, you know, oh, that's on those lists, I'll come to that later. Let me just see if there was something else. No, that was really the recycle shred program, so that we could get that in, and the recycle shred program, if, if it was, and I believe it's in my email, and if not, I apologize. The one that was a year ago, we can put that in also. Because there is a small look-back period, not just the physical twelve months, so we could start building up some stuff. Once we use it, that's it, so FYI, and also, because it's not here any longer, the waterfall festival, you're just that little short update, if you look at the, the litter pickup that's being done by, and I forget her name right off the top of my head.
And, uh, Sling English?
English, right, Miss English. I gave you a sample of what she had done, and that's what we have to put together, so that we can put it in the place, and if a couple pictures, I know you have them, so send them along, and I can get them up and done, because if we don't get up and done, we will not, we will nowhere near meet the July deadline, so those would be really good. But other than that, Sustainable Connecticut, I think it's this week, they're handing out the awards for the period that ended in August. So the towns, the new towns, or towns that got from a silver, excuse me, from a bronze, and then got upgraded to a silver for this time around. And people, towns who the first time are being recognized, I think that's this week, they were supposed to have an event at someplace in West Hartford, and I don't remember, but it was that was that. So that's all I have on Sustainable CP. Okay, so, um, that's good. Okay, Commissioner Sario, can you fill in the numbers for us for our Facebook page?
Sure, I believe it's, I just had it here, it's two sixty-seven.
Wow.
For the litter free, before you toss, I have not been updating or following that, the latest number I had.
Now, we just need to know what the latest number today, because when somebody looks back.
Yeah.
Then they'll know, and it will give us something to make, to make a decision that we talked about earlier, of whether or not we can close part of that page.
Yeah, I, I can look that up and get an update.
Thank you.
At the end of the meeting, but I can tell you for litter free page is the one that I've been contributing.
That's our group page, that's.
Right, yeah. That's, that's the same as it was last month, it has not changed, two hundred and sixty-seven.
Do you know, or can you tell us going forward, how many between last meeting and this meeting, we'll make it that simple, or we'll just make it as of the end of the last month, so that would be.
There was, there was no change, last month was the same.
No, 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 that's not what I'm asking, because I didn't finish, which was how many posts did we do?
Oh, very few. I believe you did three, and I did one, so four, I believe.
All right, so if we could also put that in our report. Because that, that does, the more we can do, and I have a bunch of them that will be good for the holidays.
Hmm, yeah.
About, you know, things, you know, be smart about holiday stuff, so I'm, and actually, I started an email, I didn't finish it to send it to you, because it's one I used a couple years ago, we can use it again, if you like it, I mean, if you don't like it, then we'll do something else, but.
No, it's fine.
Yeah, it's already done. I like already done.
Yeah.
If we want to put a different color background, we could do that, and then it will look new.
Or a new picture.
But, but thank you, Karen, Commissioner Sario, I really appreciate following up on that, but if we could do, we had four posts, and if you either do dates or do for the calendar month X, so when we have our meeting in December, for the calendar month of November. That makes it easy, we don't have to worry about dates, and it's far enough along to report it.
Sounds good.
Keeps it simple, instead of having to keep all kinds of charts and notes and so forth, calendar month. Or number. And again, only the group page is what we're really concentrating on. Okay, that would be super, if that, just as a little update, because, I mean, they were lucky, they had before us two posts a year. So, we're working on it, and I do want to, because I know you've been working with Mr. Hillman, and thank you for continuing to send information when it's available, please do anything, I mean, anything is more than nothing, even though it might sound really boring. If you have some really cool notes or stats on the leaf pickup, that will help promote how wonderful we, really, it is a tremendously great program, that would be a great thing to let people know how that, because the more they understand, maybe that would be just one, one person less will complain.
We could only hope.
Well, if we don't do it, can't happen, so let's give it a whirl, because there's some really great stuff in understanding how many miles or streets have to be blown with the yeah, somebody was complaining about your not snow blowers, your leaf blowers. Oh, they should rate them to the thing. Yeah, not gonna happen. Okay, but anyway, anything along that line would really be helpful, and then we'll just post pictures, and we'll just post something, and, and then we share it off, and they're like, wow, I didn't know that. And the more, one less person that's not knowledgeable is wonderful. So, um, but Karen, thank you for following me up, I know, but I have a couple things for you, and I told you I would be looking for pictures and so forth, so I hopefully you will be able to use them, or in some combination, you let me know, okay?
That sounds good, I appreciate that.
Oh, yeah, well, yeah, it's, it's amazing, the scary pictures, I find. Okay, that's letter A, we're gonna go to letter C now in the list. And I have a motion. Well, first, I have a report, as of the twenty, skip the page, of the October twenty-fifth. Ms. Napes, who was a commissioner, sent in her formal resignation, and it was accepted on that day at the town council meeting. So we're still back to just four people. When I had spoken to also this, what you call it, a couple days ago, to the town clerk, I did express the fact that we have been trying to get people to be on the commission, and what could he do to help us, so he, he sent about some stuff to the town council about how tough it is with only four people filling seats and sending out some information, so anybody who's doing that, or if you know of somebody, and you don't want to approach them yourself, then call me, okay? Okay, but here is the big news, because this is, was kind of dumb, but not done properly, so, Ms. Bonkall. Commissioner Bonkall, would you accept to be the representative to the BOP committee?
Yes.
Okay, so now here's the motion. All of you are gonna have to vote, and Joyce, you should be abstaining from the vote, since it's about you. But the motion is to, are we ready to write this down, because this is really careful, because this came from the town clerk's office, to formally approve Commissioner Bonkall as EQC representative to the BOP committee. Okay? And do we have a second?
I second.
Thank you, Karen. Wait a minute, Karen, second, and any discussion? Yay or nay?
Yay.
You want to discuss something, Joe, go ahead.
Oh, no, 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 I was, I was voting for Joyce to be approved, I thought you were saying she's gonna.
Oh, okay, yeah, no, we're not voting yet.
Okay.
We're at the discussion stage, we do a motion, a second, then we have discussion, and then we arrange whatever we have, and then we, then we vote. Okay, so, um. Okay, so we have anything more that we want to say about, well, I would like to say, not to change the motion, but just to say, I want to thank Commissioner Bonkall for the work she has done on the BOP committee, that has never if you go back and look at old BOP committee minutes, yes, we have to have a life. She has done tremendous information, and just bringing it to us is tremendous, and understanding the air quality and how it's dealt with, and a lot of the sorry if my, my, my brain gets a little, little fuzzy right now, but the the, the information that you bring up, when you have like charts and graphs that you get and bring up, and we get to, really get to see what is truly going on, so I want to thank her for making this position really, so that we can understand, and then we can make suggestions of what we want to do, of which we're gonna talk about in a minute, but I do want to make that she has done a tremendous job, more than I, more than I could do, so Commissioner Bonkall, thank you. So can I now have a vote? From me, Joe, and Karen?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
And thank you, Joyce.
Congratulations.
Yeah, and I'm sure you all have enjoyed her, her stuff and learning about stuff that you never thought you were ever gonna learn about when you lived in town. So this is important, as, as we could bring more information, so again, Ms. Bonkall, thank you. What this will now happen, as this goes, um, hold on. Oh, this will now, because it is a representative to that committee, you're not a member, so it doesn't go through the town council and get approved and all that stuff. They just put it on, and you go on, so the, the next town council meeting is next week? I don't have a calendar in front of me. Councilman Verdraco, do you know when the next day of the next town council meeting is?
Um, next week is a special meeting, I think it's the week after, the week before Thanksgiving.
Week before Thanksgiving, okay. Thank you.
Because it was supposed to be this week, but, but we didn't have one because of the election.
Oh, okay, all right, that's right, the election was Tuesday, okay, special meeting. That's in place of the one that would have been held.
No, um, the special meeting is a one-subject only, so yeah, so, um, the, this would be on the one before the next, the following week, if you wanted to put anything on the agenda.
Well, this will, this is gonna go on to the agenda, I hope, so we'll find out if it makes the agenda, because I will make sure that it's sent to James, between Rob and I, we'll make sure it goes to James first thing tomorrow.
He's probably not in, it's, it's, isn't the town hall closed?
Say that again?
Is the town hall closed for Veterans Day?
No, it's open tomorrow.
Okay.
Last I checked, email works twenty-four seven. So all we have to do is make sure that he's aware that we voted for this, and everything is good, because then it could go on to the, whenever he does the agenda for the appointments and the resignation part, that's where it's gonna show up, which is kind of towards the mid-part of the meeting. All right, so thank you, and congratulations, and thank you, Commissioner Bonkall, again. Okay.
You're welcome.
Uh, litter pickup of the citizen group, that was, we touched base on it really quickly. At least get me the dates, so I can put a space holder for these things, if we don't have the final picture or something to put in it.
Yeah, I can get, I can get you an update right now, there was no pickup on September, because there was a, a date in a location conflict, and then October twenty-third, there was twenty-two.
But you need to send me the little slip that has.
I will, I will, I will, I'm just updating, updating everybody.
Thank you.
October twenty-third, there was twenty-two pounds picked up.
Perfect, that's super. I am so glad that there's these events, not that they have to be big or small, but they're events that we have to go and allow people to know about them, and continue to send out information on them, so thank you very much, I appreciate it, Karen, thank Commissioner Sario. Okay, next letter, E. BOP tilt on air quality. Commissioner Bonkall, you're on.
Okay.
Yay.
There was supposed to be a BOP tilt on annual meeting in October. Five people showed up for the meeting, including a BOP representative, since the date was shown on the town's website, but the meeting door at the town hall was locked. Apparently, there was some sort of lack of communication, and I have not received any notice about a meeting in November or December.
Okay, so the meeting couldn't exist because the town hall was blocked?
No, the meeting, apparently, there was some sort of lack of communication, and even though it was posted on the town's website, I don't know, something about it wasn't, there wasn't any official notice, or I don't know, I don't know exactly, but the door was locked, and, you know, the, there were some people from, I don't know, something, something else was going on that night. And, um, anyway, yeah, seemed to be a lack of communication in regard to that meeting, which was not held, even though like the BOP quarry representative was there, a couple of citizens were there, I was there, um. I don't know.
I don't know. Waiting for a reschedule?
I received, and let me finish this, Barbara from the health department, and I continued to see high readings from the sensor. The readings seem to be when the wind is coming from the south-southeast, in other words, from the quarry. High reading occasionally comes from the south-southwest. I drove down Hartford Road and noticed a new operation in full swing across from the quarry. It appears they do similar work as the BOP tilt operation, minus the mining, but on a smaller scale. So it's possible a high reading, when the wind is coming from the south-southwest, could be from that company and not BOP, which is why we need another sensor. I'm assuming this company has a permit to operate. I notified Barbara about this operation. I asked if perhaps the huge sand pile they have, which is approximately thirty feet high, could be covered with tarp or put under some sort of protective cover, similar to what you see a town highway departments use, use to cover salt. I don't think the Environmental Quality Commission should take the position of, if the operation is causing a problem, they should be shut down, but rather what solutions can we offer to solve the problem? So these things would have been discussed at the meeting that didn't take place. And I received an email from Barbara, Barbara asked me, she says she has no further updates to give to me to present at this meeting. And she asked me if I had heard anything more about a meeting to replace the meeting that was supposed to be held, and I told her, no, I said, I hadn't heard anything.
All right.
To make matters worse. Another sand soil operation seems to have started up by Weber's Nursery.
Where?
The operation abuts the Maple Glen condominiums. Apparently the operation has been reported to the town and the town is or is going to impose fines. There is also a noise problem there.
Not to cry.
Production is operating seven days a week. Last Sunday, I was at a friend's condo at Maple Glen, at the Maple Glen complex. The noise was so bad, when my friend was just a few feet from me. I had to raise my voice to carry on a conversation with her. She also complained about dirt and dust covering her patio furniture. They have this Maple Glen complex actually hired an attorney. That contacted planning and zoning. And a cease and desist order was put out. But unfortunately. The town, when you violate a cease and desist order like this. The town only fines you a hundred dollars a day. And apparently this isn't enough for this nursery or this paving company, whatever they are. Isn't enough to stop off the operation. The fine of a hundred dollars per day isn't enough to stop the operation, so it goes on. I don't, I guess, I mean, I told. I told my friend I would bring it up to this meeting, but I said if they, if the condo complex has an attorney and the attorney has gotten the town to. Um, put out a cease and desist order, I said, there's nothing more, nothing more we can do. But obviously, um, I mean, so now there's, think about it, something's going, something's going on here. We've got Ballt, we've got the company across from Ballt, I don't know their name. And now we, now we've got this nursery operation. This is not a good picture. We've got dust and we've got noise.
Uh, one question.
And we've got, and we've got three, yeah.
Maple Glen is located where in town?
It's to, to get to it, you actually have to go up Charles Street. And then take a ride into, I believe it's Sunrise Avenue.
Okay.
And what is odd is, for example, my friend's condo. Her, her property ends and there's a row of arborvitae trees. On the other side of those arborvitae trees is all this equipment. Making the noise and throwing up dust. I mean, this, I mean, there seems to be no buffer zone or I don't, I don't know. I don't know how they're allowed to operate so close to a residential area.
Well, that would have to be involved, town planning and zoning could tell us that. Because that's, that's, that's.
Zoning, Patty, did you hear what I said? Zoning has already issued a cease and desist order, which they're ignoring. I mean, this is the legal.
Ask how much buffer? That is, that's in the town planning and zoning rules.
Aside from that, I mean, that's, that's irrelevant at this point because they've been already issued a cease and desist order and they're ignoring it.
Well, then, they're gonna have a fine and not us. We, all we can do is encourage.
There's, this is, yeah, this is a quality of life issue and with um, the other two operations, it's, it's mainly dust. Some complaints about noise from Ballt, but with this operation, it's both dust and noise.
And who was, who was issued the citation? Was it, was it Ballt Tillcon or the other company?
Oh, no, this is the one, um, the nursery, not, it's not actually the nursery. I don't, I don't know what they're called, um, paving, I think it's called Weber's Paving.
That's, that, that, that's the other company?
No, 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 no. There's another problem in town off of Charles Street. Maple Glen condominiums is complaining about this Weber's paving. Operating seven days a week.
Weber paving.
Sunday, I mean, I was, I was at my friend's house on a Sunday. And it was in full operation, noise, dust, everything. And they've been issued a cease and desist order and they're ignoring it.
Do we have?
No, they're paving, they're paving somewhere there?
No, they're not paving, apparently they grind up material that is used in the paving operation. So they sell it, they're, they're making the.
Yeah.
Material, whatever is put into the paving material, they make it and then sell it.
How long have they been ignoring the cease and desist order?
Um, I don't know, I'm guessing three or four months, five months maybe.
That's a long time.
Do we have a copy of it?
No, I don't have a copy of that. I don't even, I'm not even sure the attorney or the condo association would, would release that. But I'm sure planning and zoning would, I'm sure planning and zoning has a copy. I mean, there's nothing, I mean, it's basically out of our hands, there's nothing we can do if they're ignoring the cease and desist order.
But we are looking to have a, 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 a good information that we're putting in our minutes. So that's all I just wanted to know, if we have an idea of when that happened. I mean, the fact that we just found out, that's okay, but when did that, when did it happen? Do you think it was four or five months ago?
Right, yeah.
Thank you.
And TPZ issued a cease and desist order?
I don't know if it's actually um, town planning and zoning or if it's the town attorney. Or if it's the town manager, I'm not sure who signs on the dotted line. But somebody from the town signs it. And it's delivered, I don't know who delivers it, if it's by mail or registered mail or sheriff delivers it, I don't know. But a cease and desist order has been issued to them.
Well, that, that should be followed up if, if, if they're still operating seven days a week and, and.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I mean, I believe, I'm not, I'm not sure, but I believe the condo association has already said to the town, they're ignoring your cease and desist order. I mean, I don't know legally, I don't know legally what the next step would be for the condo association, I don't know. I mean, could, I mean, could the town possibly get sued because they're not doing anything? I mean, they issued a cease and desist order and it's being ignored? I mean, I don't want, I don't want to see, I don't want to see the condo association suing the town. But I mean, could, I mean, could that possibly happen?
They dropped the cease and desist order, so, or they made the complaint, so. Um, obviously, we have a lot of no information here to understand the, the, the rest of this.
Well, well, if they made a complaint and it's still going on, I mean, they could make this an issue. Three or four months.
It's, that's up to the condo association, I mean, they hired an attorney.
Yeah.
So I would think their attorney would know the next step.
They might be planning the next step right now.
Okay.
Could be.
Do we have, do we have anything else?
I, I just said one question.
Thank you for that information and there's stuff going on that we're not aware of.
I have a couple more questions on that. How high are the reading, how high are the reads and how often are these high readings?
Joe, we don't have a sensor up there. The only place we have a sensor is near Ballt Quarry on Hartford Road. That, we don't have any sensor over by the um, Maple Glen condominiums.
Okay.
One question, the. Sensor that is near the Ballt Quarry. Is new this year.
Right.
Thank you. So it.
I believe, I believe it went online in July.
Thank you, but I mean, it, it happened this calendar year right now. And it was the first time that we've had a sensor, so that was a really big step. And the health department supplied the sensor?
Yes, and I think.
Okay, thank you, that's all I wanted, okay. Only at Ballt.
I didn't know.
That brings, that brings up the next issue and that is, um, we need to purchase a second sensor. It's very hard to pinpoint where. Pollution is coming from with only one sensor. Especially because a sensor can, I mean technically, us, technically a sensor can pick up. Air pollution from 360 degrees. Now Barbara and I have been working on how to correlate the wind direction with readings from the sensor. So it seems. With pretty much accuracy, when we have a high reading and the wind is coming from the south, southeast. There's a very good chance it's coming from the Ballt Quarry. What about if it's, we have a high reading? From the south, southwest, which we did have one time. That's why I would like to get a second sensor. Is there another pollution problem in town that we don't know about?
So this is how we go about it, one, we're going to write up the recommendation. Because we can recommend to the town council that this get done. Okay? So that's, that's, that's where, that's where we lie. We can't go out and buy one and put it up anywhere. Cause it's not, we don't have any right to do that. But if we put the whole thing down and not very long, you, you kind of told me about it a little bit, which is really good. And explain that and we could, um, one, put it on town council agenda and make the recommendation to the town council. Um, and then they will take it from there because that, they have to come up with all that, whatever's necessary. Because I, or the question is Barbara knows how they got the one put up already that came out this year. Barbara knows, right?
Yeah, and, and that is, I'm surprised she got it put up where she did get it.
Barbara belongs to that. Go ahead.
Cause, cause that's private property, so I'm really surprised that she got it put up on private property, but kudos to her.
Private property, okay. Is it on the, the car guys?
It's, yeah, it's at, it's on, at a business.
I, I know what, is it the guys who have the car automobile shop?
There's two companies on that road that have automobile shops and it's, yes, it is on one of them.
Okay, but it's on private property. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, so she got it put on private property, um, and maybe understanding what she had done. Um, and then, okay, that's good. Do we have a private property person that's nearby where we would like to consider this?
You mean, uh, I was looking at the school, but that's not private property, but I don't see what difference it makes. Why does it have to be private versus a public school?
Cause you're not allowed to touch public property unless it's through the town and or. The Newington Public School District and the, well, and their, their, off the, their body, which. Is the Board of Education. And so you can't put.
If I were.
You, you can't put something on town property unless you go to the appropriate um, town council. Then they turn around and say, okay, so and so take care of this and, and then they, they take care of it. Because we, we can't do it. We have no authority. Now, it's one thing to, to get something on, that's why if Barbara has some more information on that, that would be very useful. Uh, cause this is big inroads that have been made, this is tremendous. I'm really amazed. But we just can't decide to go put something on town property, not, not, not allowed. Cause it's, whether it be the town or the school district. They're two separate bodies, they're so much fun to watch, but um.
That brings up another issue.
Huh?
Barbara, Barbara, to my knowledge, Barbara is going part-time, she was a full-time health specialist. But to my knowledge, she's going part-time and, and I guess she's looking at retirement or semi-retirement. Right now, she's out of the office until November 22nd.
But she can tell you what their process was to go to private property. As opposed to town, because that's another home of Gila. But that would be part of our presentation to go for a second. Center. Okay, because. That's the way, that's the way we do it, I mean, this is how the town works. It's, it's a bunch of extra steps, I know, might sound a little bit tough, but this is the way we get, how it gets done. So it goes to them and then they'll assign it to somebody that they said, oh yeah, let's do this, we'll assign it to somebody and we can go, go, and go to town. So their next meeting. Okay, we have a short memory span. It's a week. Not this coming Tuesday, but the following Tuesday. Um, which is, so we have time to get it on that agenda. But if you put together something short and sweet as a recommendation and what it needs to be done, I think that would work out really well. And then don't worry about if you don't have a tremendous amount of absolute. Details, but you got the general gist of them understanding why it's really important. Because what we had, what was discovered this year was a high level. Um, many times, high level of the. And you have real numbers to support it, so thank you very much. Okay, do we, does that sound okay, guys?
I think Joe has a question.
No, I, I, I just want to say, you said it was coming, you said it was also coming from the opposite direction, the southwest. I was saying that area like Hartford Road, around the area, th- there's a street with a lot of businesses, so I, I mean, I, I think. You know, this is coming from, from more than one business, it's got, it's gotta be.
My suspicion is that across the street from Ballt Quarry. Another mini Ballt Quarry, I guess you can call, another mini gravel and sand soil operation has started up. Now Barbara did go there, maybe I think it was May or June, July, something like that. And she didn't see anything big. But I was there about two weeks ago and I did see a major operation going on there. There was a humongous, like 30, 40 foot pile of sand. And I mean, they were, this operation was going in full swing. So I emailed Barbara and I said, things have changed. And the reason I was curious is because we were getting a high reading from the south, southwest. What's, which is not the quarry. So I said, well, what's going on over there? And I, I literally took a ride over there. And I said, oh, this might be the culprit. So I mean, basically the more, the more sensors we have, the better, put it that way.
Okay, this is good, so. Um, can we get, can we get a, a recommendation to give to the town and get, and know if we can get this thing moving forward?
We do want a motion, is that it?
No, it's not a motion, it's, I just need what, what our recommendation is, because none of us have read it. So we need to read what you're going to present to the town council. It's sure, it doesn't, thi- thi- this is not a novel, this is. It sure it doesn't thi- this is not a novel. This is. We have come across X. Explain a couple of the situations. We have now come across why. And we believe that we really, in order to protect our citizens. Is having. Not only the. Please correct my directions if I'm wrong, the south southeast. Sensor. But a sensor that would be in the south southwest.
Pretty much, yeah.
All right, then keep it short and sweet, short sentences. And that will allow the town council to say. If they have questions, they'll ask, which is good.
And I I excuse me, I have questions now. Who owns that sensor? The town doesn't own the sensor, does it?
Please, I believe the health department owns it.
Okay, so so the health, why should the town be buying a sensor if it's the? And who reads it? There's nobody in town trained to read it. It's it's a it's a function of the. Department of Health. And if they feel that there's an issue, then they should put our sensor there. And in terms of putting it on private property. Of course, the auto. Um, it was no. Brain bender, the the two um. Auto places are the ones that are complaining. So that's why. The Department of Health put it. On their property.
Well, let me give you a little bit of. Let me give you a little bit of my background, Gail. I am a trained. Air pollution engineer. I worked for the state of Connecticut. Doing exactly this type of work. Which is why Barbara and I talk the same language. Barbara and I understand what about wind direction and pollution levels and sensors, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So. Health Department. Bought the first one. But. I think Barbara's looking to the town. In other words, they don't they don't have bottomless pockets. They don't have, they're just not going to keep. Putting up centers and coming up with this money. But their Barbara was actually very interested in the fact that we could possibly pre putting up. A second sensor in the town.
Personally, I think it's it's premature to be running next week to the town council without saying if. If the proper channels are for something like this, which is why the sensor was put up because of issues through ball where the health department. Has been involved from a long, long, long time. They they determined it was an issue, put up. That was one of the resolutions is to to monitor it. And now we're starting as as, you know, running around putting up um. Sensors at different places. We don't, I mean, I I appreciate your experience, Joyce, but you're not employed by the town. Somebody who who's who's licensed and experienced and is part of their job to be reading this, to figure out where to put it and to read it. We can make recommendations. Why don't we make a recommendation? Um, you know, you can make a recommendation that we want to pursue additional equipment through the Department of Health, whatever, but to be running through the town council. And all of a sudden, put this on the town. I don't think it's appropriate, in my opinion. But you know.
Maybe you weren't, maybe you weren't at the meeting where um I gave the what anybody? Anybody could look at the data. And maybe you weren't at the meeting.
No, I was at the meeting. I just think that we got to put. We have to put these type of analysis and whatever in the proper departments.
Right, and this additional and additional data sensor would be read by Barbara. In other words, the more the more data we have, the better. And she's. She's in agreement that it would be. I mean, there's some towns that have three, four and five sensors up. We have.
And how did they get it? And who pays for it? How did they get it?
I didn't ask the other towns, but Barbara might know.
There's too many unanswered questions. I'm sorry to bring it to the town council.
Like what? What are their answer? What are the questions you're asking? I could probably answer them.
Are who's responsible for in the first place for monitoring these? Who's responsible for? Where are the?
Barbara. Barbara, 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 the health department.
It's their equipment.
She monitors it. She monitors it. He has already issued. She has already issued a formal complaint before Corey. She has already issued a formal complaint because of the high readings.
I've been involved in the ball commission for before, you know, for for a couple of years. I understand. This was and the health department put it. There to monitor the the readings. But what I'm saying is now all of a sudden, we're going to say, oh, we think there's a problem here. We think there's a problem there. The town. These these are health department issues. I think we need to first formally go through Barbara. I mean. And say, we would, you know, we feel that there's a problem here. Usually there's a problem here. We recommend environmental quality with the blessing of the town council. Um, will you put up another sensor and monitor it? I mean.
Oh, whatever. I you know, I forget it. I.
I just, I think you have. I think you have a point there, Gail. I think since the CCHD is the one who monitors these things, and if they believe that there's a problem, they should make the request to the town. Um, in conjunction with the EQC possibly.
Well, Barbara is out of the office until November twenty second because, as I mentioned, she's now semi retired.
That's not that far away. That's right around Thanksgiving.
I will Barbara and I are in um. Close contact through emails. So I will relay her the message that. The um. Health department should make the request to the town. If another sensor is to be placed in in town someplace.
Okay, and 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 that we have been. Involved in whatever to. That was it's not just by her. It's. We're concerned group of citizens um. And that way so that they can understand the bigger picture. Now let's remember. Unless they're sitting in or watching our meeting, they don't have any. Um, they only have a a a minimal amount of knowledge and. Commissioner Bockel, you're you're a lot more knowledgeable than all of us. So again, thank you very much. Um, I think there's a couple of good points. We really need to put this together and put it in the correct. Um, what you call it. Somebody fill in the blank for me. The correct way of going about. Say again.
Format.
Thank you. Um, so that we can just do this um as effi- efficiently as possible. Cause we can get it all written up the best way we can. Get everything down, make sure that we. Someone reading it is going to understand it because they're not sitting in this meeting. So they're going to be.
Well, then, well, then it maybe we should hold off and have have Barbara. Put in the request to the town council.
And that would be a great question to talk to her about because she had to do something when they did the one that they did. Already, which I mean, which bringing us like amazing amounts of information that we never had before. Okay. Do we have anything more? Okay. Let's go to um letter F. Trying to keep us on on track here. Uh, which is special parking for recognition of use of hybrid cars. Um, there's a lot of things here. Um, again, it's a presentation. Um, to. Take away a a public parking space. Possibly. Um, there's X amount of parking spaces that have to be uh kept depending on where this is going to be. I I'm just giving you and not to be the negative milli here, but um. There are. Um. Requirements under zoning and planning that um. X amount of spaces have to be for this, that and the other thing. So designating a space. Could not necessarily be that good. Where do we want to put it? All of that, we should have that all presented here at a meeting so that we can make sure that.
I have thought, yeah, I have facts on that.
Okay, good. So would you write them up so that we can all read them together? Everybody can send in.
I did, and I did. I presented it in an email. I did that.
You presented it in an email. Okay.
Well, let me read the paragraph I have.
This is how you would present it to. Somebody other than us.
I did that. Patty, at the last meeting, you said write up a paragraph so we can discuss this at the next meeting. And I wrote up the paragraph and I sent out the email.
Okay, don't beat me up, but you know, there's only so much I can remember and I appreciate and I believe that that's what I said. So or and you sent it, but somehow. I'm missing it. So I will have to go back and find that. And if that's sufficient. Then we could go forward. Um, and we should.
Well, my my suggestion is that we have, I mean, I'm not talking about, you know, twenty five parking spaces all around Market Square. I'm talking to start. By having a um reserved parking maybe at the town hall and then maybe. We could have one or two in Market Square. And if. This method to reward.
Need to be written out and tell them exactly what you want to see happen. And then they can go from that point. All right, and that's in that. Okay.
This is what I'm thinking.
Okay, go ahead.
A sign like that. I mean. We're all about. Being more sustainable. So why not reward the people who are driving electric or car hybrid cars? They're they're not, well, they're a shining shining star. Why not reward these people for being sustainable? And maybe. The snowball will start rolling. And restaurants. Will start putting up a sign and other places will put up a sign. And we word these big people for being sustainable, just like a employee of the month. Reward sign.
All right.
Or veteran park veterans park here sign. That's a reward.
I think one or two spots is reasonable.
And that and whether or not you could actually, the town would have to designate the space because it would take away from public parking.
One or two spots is reasonable. That's not unreasonable, one or two spots.
Well, there, as Patty said, there is a requirement by zoning for for parking spaces. And if we designated for only one user. I don't know if that would still be considered towards the quota.
Questions that are not answered because I don't know, but I was thinking about that in general. Because. You just can't. We don't. We can make the recommendation, but you got to spell it all out and hand it to them. So um. I I I'm not arguing. The point I'm arguing the. How to get it so that we can put it up. Have it looked at and have it either approved or not approved.
Just make a just just make like a recommendation from our from our uh. From our committee.
That is correct.
Patty, I'll send over that. I'll send over that email again.
I appreciate it because I I I will, when I hang up, I wrote down that you sent me an email and I apologize.
Joyce, I I wanted to ask as well if I I may add. Um, I I would recommend just starting with one spot at the town. Um, hall area. Um, there are already two parking spots in Market Square for EV vehicles.
Right.
Um, so I don't think there needs to be more in Market Square. It's pretty clear that those are for uh. Uh, hybrid or EV vehicles. So at least for now. Um, I would start um with just one at town hall. That's just my recommendation.
I I'd be fine with me.
Okay, so we need it. We need it written up pretty so that we can. Read it into the minutes or submit it in the minutes so they can read it. And then they can go forward and determine if they. Um, that because it's a recommendation which is. Duly in our. Task of a. Of our commission to make these types of recommendations to um. The town council.
Can I ask Commissioner Badrico and and Mr. Hellman if you have any other feedback for us now? Or for Joyce? Um, that we should prepare ahead of time. Or details we should gather in our proposal. For Joyce's proposal.
The only the only thing that I might recommend is is reaching out to uh the town planner. And letting them know what you are gonna recommend and see if it's a viable option to use one of those spaces for. For what you're requesting.
That would be great. We would send out your um. A simple email to um Renata. Um, in order to find out if that's. A doable situation. If it's doable, we go forward. If not doable, we'll find out whatever it is.
I have a question for Rob. Who makes the signs?
That sign we would actually have to order from our vendor.
Right. All right, anything more on that? Now leave this here because. If 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 it's a doable thing and. Uh, uh, planning is only said, yeah, it's a doable. Then we'll go there. Might not be the per- we'll find out whatever that perfect spot is and we'll go from there. Uh, but yeah, Renata would be um. The town planner and the person who would be able to say yea or nay. Um, and she's probably. A lot quicker at looking up something like that than you or I or anybody here. Yes, no? Cool, all right. But I I really, I really liked the the idea. And I think it's a great recommendation. Um, and I want to say thank you very much and we'll we'll work to making it happen. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Uh, let's see. Oh, yeah. Oh, I I'm sorry. I'm looking at something else here on my tab. Um, Mr. Hellman, what's going on besides a lot of leaves?
Sorry, the leaf business is picking up, as they say. Um, no, I just wanted to give you a quick overview of our uh. Of the leaf program. Um. It's uh, it's us usually a uh ends up being a six week program. We uh we advertise, though, we will uh guarantee to pickups pending, you know, uh, any unforeseen circumstances such as weather. Or like we had years ago, the October snowstorm. Um, so usually takes us from the beginning of November till about mid December. Um, and we have four crews that are out. We start on the east side and then we go to the west side, as I said earlier in our conversations. Takes us about a week to get through each side. Um, and when all said and done, we end up picking up anywhere between twelve thousand five hundred and fourteen thousand cubic yards. Of of leaves. Um, to put that in perspective, um, a tractor trailer. Basically holds anywhere between ninety to a hundred cubic yards if you were to fill that with leaves. So it's about a hundred and twenty five to a hundred and forty truckloads of leaves that actually get taken out of the facility. The leaves are brought to.
Repeat that again, I was writing this down so we have some info we could put together. You said twelve thousand?
Yep, anywhere between twelve thousand and fourteen thousand cubic yards are collected.
And that is approximately how many tractor trailers?
Uh. You consider a tractor trailer holds about a hundred cubic yards, so it's anywhere between a hundred and twenty to a hundred and forty.
Wow. Just that the just a normal tractor trailer, right? Not 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 one of those fancy big ones.
No, just your typical tractor trailer is about a hundred cubic yards. Yeah, anywhere between eighty and a hundred, yeah.
Okay, super. Really? That many leaves?
Yeah. Yep, and they are uh they're brought to the Scotts facility in Ellington. And there they are turned into various other products.
Where is that located?
Ellington.
Thank you. And how do they get there?
By the tractor trailers. So we we bring them in with our six wheelers. Uh, offload them and then the tractor trailers come in there anywhere between five and ten a a day. We load them up and and the contractor hauls them to Elling.
Okay, so they go into the transfer station or over at where you are?
Correct. Correct.
Which one?
No, I'm sorry, the transfer station. I'm sorry. I was reading my notes. Sorry.
That's okay. And while I was giving you a choice and you said, yeah.
Yeah, I was reading and so yes, yep. So the, yes, not the highway facility. They go to the transfer station. Yes.
Okay. Okay. So we bring them to the transfer station and then the vendors tractor trailers come in?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. So we bring them to trans, okay, wait a minute. She just, I never heard this whole story. So this is good transfer and then vendor picks up?
Yep.
Just to keep it real short and sweet. Okay. And they make that many trips then?
Yes, they do. Yep.
Wow. Wow. That's a lot of leaves.
It is, you know, and the majority of them are brought in by us. There are some residents who choose to bring in their own. Uh, but it's, it's definitely a small percentage of what, what is picked up.
Okay, so maybe less than five percent?
Oh, I would say less than five percent. Yes.
Okay, just, just to give it some realization that the majority of people enjoy the leaf pickup if they're living in a single-family home.
Yeah, all you have to do is drive through town and see all the piles out on the road.
Yeah, the piles are on the road instead of their. Yeah. Okay, piles. And it should be, they should not be in the road, right?
That is correct.
Rob, can I ask her, you said that.
Go ahead, Karen.
The facility is able to um, make them into another product. And I'm assuming that they, they pay for the cost to have the tractor trailers come, come, and then they have the product that they can use. Is that right?
Um, no, we do not sell the product. We, we pay to have it hauled out of our facility and then it's owned by the contractor to do what they choose.
Okay. And do you know what it is they, they make it into?
Uh, it's generally bagged compost. It's, it's a, actually it's a Scotts facility. So just think of the products that Scotts makes and puts in bags. Um, they do that. And then, you know, peat moss and, and why, actually I don't think the peat moss out of it, but mostly it's topsoil compost type material.
Okay.
We used to, I used to get it delivered that stuff when you guys used to keep it. I know, back in the dark ages. And we had it delivered at Woods Edge and I would get ten, twelve truckloads. You know, dump trucks, like the dump trucks we have. They would fill it up with the mulch kind of thing. And they would, I mean, back in the day. And then we stopped doing that for whatever reason.
Yeah.
It was, it was great because it put, it put stuff right back into, into Newington from Newington.
Right. That is true.
So it was like.
Why did we stop that? Rob, why did we stop doing that?
Stopped well before my time, Joyce. I'm not one hundred percent sure why. I think it's stopped partially because at that time, the Apple Hill condominiums were going up. And this process is not the, uh, uh, the best type of thing to be doing near residential homes. It does have an odor to it. Um, even if it's tended to properly, it does have an odor and there's constantly leaves there. So when you get the heavy winds, um, they do have a tendency to blow around, although there's a buffer between us and Apple Hill. So I just think the location of our transfer station in relation to Apple Hill and the park um, just wasn't very conducive to doing it any longer.
Thank you. Apple Hill's across the street. Isn't it?
No, the, it's to the rear of the, uh, cause it's on, it's on Lewis Street. Well, I'm sorry, not Apple Hill. Oh my gosh, not Apple Hill.
I was gonna say, wait a minute, that's not Apple Hill.
I apologize.
Churchill, Churchill. What was his name?
Churchill is across the street and then, well, Hunter's Green and then, what is next? Hunter's Green. Karen, help me out.
Foxborough.
Foxborough, that's it. Thank you. I'm sorry.
That's okay. And Chase at Foxborough.
And Chase at Foxborough, yeah.
Those, those are the two.
Kind of on the same land. Okay. That makes more sense because I'm going Apple Hill. No. Okay.
Yeah, I apologize for that one.
No, that's fine. Cause Foxborough and Chase at Foxborough were there for a lot longer time than Hunter's Green. And well, Churchill's been there for a very long time. Probably the same amount of time I, we've been here. Okay, so you thought it was not good because of possible odor in the building of these? And what was the other reason?
Um, the, the cells are large and, and the wind does blow significantly through the transfer station. I do not know why. Sometimes it's like a wind tunnel and the debris just happens to go everywhere. It gets into the park. And although there's a buffer.
That was the key. Okay, the heart. Sorry. It's like literally right there. Thank you. I just want to have some semblance of, if I can read my notes there. But thank you. How are we doing? How many mattresses? Do we have that number? This is really frightening. How many mattresses we could throw away in a month?
Um, I don't have the, the total for the year so far, but I know we did, I just, um, got a note from our vendor. We did a hundred mattresses in, in October at a weight of three and a half tons.
Wow. And they're all being recycled now?
Yes, any of the mattresses that go in the mattress container that gets the, to the vendor. Yes.
And you said it was how many tons?
Uh, three and a half.
Wow. That's a lot of pounds. But they're all being recycled now. Which is, we're doing our parts and there's no additional cost for them to come and pick these up, correct?
That is correct. It's funded by the, uh, what it's called EPR Extended Producer Responsibility. So the, all the CELE and all those types of manufacturers are responsible to pay for it.
Okay, so our tax dollars are working someplace else, but funneling back in to do this, but which not in our town budget. Okay. So somebody's gotta pay for it. And when it comes down to it, it's, okay, that's really exciting. I just can't believe that we can sweep through that many mattresses and throw them away in a month. That's a lot. Think about it. Look around your neighborhood. Wow.
Yeah, it's astonishing, the, the number when you consider there's, you know, eleven thousand or so dwelling units in town. And we can dispose of close to two thousand, twenty-five hundred mattresses annually.
Yeah, it's, it's like really a lot. All right.
But what's the average number of people who's living, who are living per household? Do you know that, Rob? Is it two, is it three or four?
Well, we have thirteen thousand households. And thirty thousand people living in town. So you could do that average pretty quickly. Um, I mean, those are rounded. It's not exact. But there's thirty thousand people living in Newington or thirty-one thousand, if you want to round it up with a new number. Um, citizens that live in residential and, or that's in total. So that does include some condos. But that's a really small number in comparison and the thirteen thousand households. So that will give you approximate average. I can't do the math in my head right now. But that's what we have. That's a really good question. Thank you. Uh, keeps it in perspective. Anything more on that? Anything more? Any new exciting stuff that I don't want to hear at a town council meeting, Rob?
No, I don't have anything at this point, Patty.
Anything new that's kind of like in the boiler, kind of spinning around, thinking about things that we could do?
Uh, not at this point. Um, I really don't have anything in the works right now.
Okay. Just nothing in work. Thank you, Rob, Mr. Hellman. I really appreciate it and, and good luck, good luck on the leaf pickup.
Thank you. Hopefully the weather holds out for us.
Yeah, no snow would be nice. Yeah, tomorrow is supposed to get rain, which is not going to help leaf pickup. Alrighty, so, um, all right, we'll go on. Thank you. Thank, is it Jose, right?
Yes, Jose is with us tonight.
Thank you, Jose, for really changing up the slides. I don't have anything more in this area. Does anybody have anything else? And this would be a new business item. I think we were talking about everything that we're currently doing. Is there anything new at this moment? If not, we'll bring it up next month?
I wanted to ask if I may.
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Hellman or Rob, is there any communication that you were getting from the recyclers, haulers? For the town on educating what recycling needs to happen or? Any additional?
We really haven't opened up that communication with Murphy Road yet. And we're still just trying to get the kinks out of it as the new facility with all of our haulers and things like that. And pretty much have all the kinks worked out. So hopefully, a good point, hopefully in the near future, we can reach out to them and they can assist us in communication to our residents.
Right.
Okay, well, that should be able to sneak us in real quickly. That would be helpful.
Thank you.
That, that was a great question, Karen. Thanks. Um, I'm trying to do this right, Commissioner Bunkel. Okay, um, number ten. Do we have anybody in the public participation room?
Nobody in the waiting room.
Okay, well, we're trying it. Okay. And then, um, okay, so, Mr. Hellman and Ms. Counselor Badrico. Uh, I would love to hear any other comments from you for tonight, things that we can look forward to.
Um, from a town council perspective, I, I know you were talking about Renata. I'm not sure whether you're aware that she'll be leaving us, um, the beginning of December.
I knew that two months ago.
So where she? She has a fantastic job with University of Connecticut, teaching planning and zoning courses. So it's a great opportunity for her and she'll be great at it. And we're also going to be doing a search for a new town manager where we've solicited proposals from four companies that do searches, whether it would be regional or national or not. The decision hasn't been made, but it certainly will, you know, there will be a search done that will bring in, you know, either regional wide or national. Um, we should be making a decision on which firm to go with within the next week or two.
Oh, good.
And, uh, just from planning and zoning, I'm not sure whether you're aware what's going on. They got approval for every, and if you wait long enough, things come back in style for the top of Cedar Mountain, which originally started out as a car, as a gas station and convenience store. Then it went to a luxury, uh, senior, you know, yeah, residential living facility. Then it went to fifty-five and over facility. And now it's back to the latest proposal. Like they got approved last week or the, two weeks ago at the last time, um, planning and zoning meeting. It's gonna be a gas station, a car wash and an ice cream, an ice cream store and a autumn, an electric vehicle auto display room. It's, they were very, there was a lot of discussion and it can't be, it's not a, it's not a dealership. It's more of like, they're gonna be on display and then people can kind of come in and just kind of look and see. But it really, but from a, from a state of Connecticut regulatory and whatever, whatever, it cannot be, it's not a dealership. It's more of a promotional display of what the possibilities are gonna be.
Okay. Okay, so it's more of a display and education.
Well, can we go there to see a Tesla?
Yeah, I think what you can go there and see all brands. I think that's what they're, the, the developer said that there's something similar, I guess, in Springfielders or he went to see it. And it's gonna be where different makers can display their cars, but they can't sell them. But it's gonna be like, I don't know, informational and go through and then you can figure out what you want. And then you go to the actual dealership after that.
Yeah, you can check out Noble. N O B L E is the, um, the brand name, I guess, of the, of the gas station and the EV station. They're gonna have EV chargers there with the gas station. They have a facility, a smaller facility in New Britton, under Britton Avenue. And, and then the Springfield facility is an education facility, which I, I'm glad to hear that. I was very excited to see that. And yes, it will be an education facility, like, like you said. Thank you.
Karen, what type of car do you have?
Excuse us, Joyce.
Karen, Karen, don't you have a hybrid?
I, I do. I have, um, we, we could certainly talk about that later, but I have a Hyundai. I could talk for a long time about that. So we'll, we'll put that in new business.
Okay, but that's really interesting. Cedar Mountain has kind of come around full circle again.
Yep.
Um, and, and anything else that we should know about Commissioner, I mean, a councilwoman?
I guess, you know, speaking of, I don't know, maybe Rob, you would know this, but apparently last weekend, there was a fire on top of Cedar Mountain. Um, again, one of the vacant buildings at the Cedar Crest Hospital. I think it was arson, but it also burned, you know, some of the property as well. I don't know whether you have any more information, Rob?
No, I don't really have any particular information, but I, from my understanding, it was pretty extensive. Um, as the damage that, that was created by it, but I, to what extent, I do not know.
Jeez. So much, so much excitement going on. Thank you very much. Is, um, let's see. I think, um, anything else from anyone else? Nope. Okay. Our next meeting will be on December eighth at six thirty PM. And before we adjourn, I want to, um, send everyone great Thanksgiving. Wishes to the friends and family and enjoy the holiday weekend. And then we'll be back again, like I said, on the eighth of December at six thirty. Again, we'll meet here on, um, Zoom. And, um, I guess now I can entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn?
Thank you, Commissioner Bunkel.
I second it.
Thank you, Commissioner Trumbetta. And are we all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Thank you. I want, and again, thank you to, um, um, Councilwoman Badrico and to our staff liaison, Rob Hellman, for being here tonight.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Happy Thanksgiving. Really do, everyone. Yep.
See you all soon. Bye-bye.